March the 4th, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. And as usual, we will start with our Chaplain Prayer and pledges. And today, we're honored to have Chaplain Talis here to lead us in both.
Will you join me, please, with the prayer? Our Father, as we gather here this morning, give us all an idea of why we're here, to do what's best for our city and our community. In that sense, we join with one another in trying to make about those ends. Please give our council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. Grant us all the wisdom to work together effectively and the humility to value each person's perspective. Save us from words, hurtful words, spoken in anger, or grudges nurtured in silence. Guide our discussions and decisions, that they may honor you and serve our shared goals. Lord, thank you for each person at this meeting, be they council or general public, and their unique talents and abilities and perspectives we all bring together here. Above all, we pray that the decisions we make, the actions that are taken, will be within your will. In the name of Christ, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America.
We have one proclamation today, and it is the with San Angelo Independent School District today. So, all of you that are here with the school district, please come forward. Good morning. Why don't you just stand around here, and then that way it'll be easy for you to come to. San Angelo Independent School District educators and staff impact the future of San Angelo daily through their care for and dedication and commitment to the children of our city. Their impact happens from the moment a child steps on a bus, walks through the school door, is fed a nourishing breakfast and lunch, and throughout the day until the last bell, and then beyond. Educators and the entire SAISD team make a difference in each child's life. And with almost 13,000 students, this is an incredible impact on our community. Today, we acknowledge the special commitment our SAISD educators and staff have on the well-being of our children. They provide a relevant and inspiring education, preparing future-ready graduates. These graduates may one-day care for your loved ones as a nurse or doctor at a local hospital, address cybersecurity threats that impact our community, create beautiful artwork or music for others to enjoy, or go on to teach the next generation of San Angelans. At SAISD, they often say, "Our people make the difference." And today, we honor the San Angelo difference-makers, those who inspire and prepare our students and support their hopes and dreams. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council and together with San Angelo Independent School District, do hereby recognize March 7th, 2025 as SAISD Difference Maker Day, and thank all SAISD educators and staff for their dedicated service to our students and families, and urge all citizens to acknowledge the occasion of this day.
Thank you, Mayor Gunter, and City Council Members, for the recognition. We're honored to serve the students of San Angelo ISD. I believe God created every one of those kids in His image, and we want to love them and care for them and educate them as they come through our doors. We are thankful for the nearly 13,000 kids that we serve and the 17 to 1,800 employees that we support and who serve our children day in and day out. Dr. Merle Brandon has joined us this morning, Soon Chaw. Shannon Schwartz and Jack Wilcox are here, representing the district. And I just want to say, on behalf of the community, thank you all for the support that you give the school district, for the opportunity we have to serve you. Thank you.
We will now move into the public comment section of the agenda. Members of the public may raise issues or concerns not listed on the regular agenda during this time. To participate, please sign in with a city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. When speaking, citizens must speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating your name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Heather, you want to start the public comment section?
Yes, ma'am. Ashley Swider. That was emailed in advance. She may not have come. Mary Wilson.
She's coming.
On here? Okay, perfect.
Better just start. Sorry. Good morning. I'm Ashley from District 2 here in San Angelo. The situation is absolutely unacceptable. Death penalties are being assigned to the only innocent party within the issue. The decision that was made and signed off on last week is a permanent solution to a temporary problem: space. There was absolutely no warning that those dogs were going to be put down when they were. Those four souls never stood a chance, but the results of euthanasia lists this past year show that the community would have shown up to save those dogs had they had the chance. I guarantee it. Paws and other rescues in the area should have been a part of the decision prior to changing the policy. I should point out that I am not against euthanases overall. They are necessary for animals with health issues, et cetera. I am against euthanizing healthy animals for space. In any case, euthanasia should be the last resort. Euthanasia should only be used to end suffering that a vet can't fix. Despite what many will say, there are solutions that don't involve mass killing. There should be improved visibility of adoptable dogs within the shelter, including an updated website. I've heard many say they can't figure out how to work the website to search for adoptable animals. Though owner surrenders can now be euthanized upon arrival, they also deserve a chance to be seen and saved. San Angelo has tried capture-kill methods before. Not only did it not work, our shelter had one of the highest rates of euthanasia in the state. We are backtracking and repeating history with this policy change. The city does have laws in place that advocate for animals. However, these laws are not enforced the way they should be. People are dumping dogs, abusing and neglecting them with little to no punishment, so they do it again and again. Dogs from hoarding, neglectful, and abusive households are almost always returned to the bad owner, again with zero consequence. That is unacceptable. If we enforce the laws to the highest degree possible, things will get better. The true problem, the awful, heartless people, will never stop or change their ways without incentive. Why should the dogs have to pay for the mistakes of an owner that they never chose? Thank you for your time.
Mary Wilson?
I'm Mary Wilson, and I'm in Single Member District 1. The following comments are directed to the mayor, city council members, city manager, and assistant city manager, but do not include the city animal shelter staff. Those peoples have an impossible job to do, and they have little support from the city. I love San Angelo, but today, I'm ashamed I live here. In the almost 60 years I've lived here, the city of San Angelo has never considered animal welfare a priority. You, the duly-elected or appointed stewards of the city, have an obligation and a duty to provide the best and most humane shelter and care possible. The current animal shelter has outlived its efficiency and is an embarrassment to San Angelo. The current shelter policy has already resulted in a senseless loss of life. This policy was not well thought out and is a lazy attempt to placate those concerned about the stray dog crisis. In fact, this policy change will likely exacerbate the issue, because more people will choose to leave dogs roaming or let them go, rather than surrender them to death. Advancement in animal welfare in San Angelo has been accomplished by Concho Valley Paws, and at their expense, not the city's. It is past time for the city to care. You can see by the number of people here today, this community cares about shelter, animals, and pets. It's time the city of San Angelo does too. Some Dr. Seuss wisdom. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. It's past time.
Jimmy Black?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, in the last two years, there's not been one dog put down on euthanasia list, and this time, we weren't given a chance. When the word went out that this was happening, not only was it a shocking experience for all of us, we pulled over 50 dogs out of that shelter immediately, immediately. And yet, they put down 20 more. I went down there for two of those, sweetest dogs you ever saw on the face of the earth, and I was told they'd already put them down, under the guise that they were aggressive. And that's always been a situation where they can come in and say, "Well, that dog is aggressive." But there's no partnership with the community. These are your real rescuers right here. It's not that vigilante group that's been posting your numbers on their accounts and saying, "Call you guys." And you know, now, what bothers me is there's no way for us to know who to pull. You get a dog in, an owner surrender, a stray, what happens is, that dog goes into a system where it can be put down in so many days, and we have no way of knowing it. The dogs that's being posted right now that says, "Pick up your dogs," they're being posted past that date. So that when I see it and I say, "I'm gonna go get those three dogs," they're already past that date. It may be euthanized. There's no way to get in between the euthanasia and help. You have a great partnership here. We don't want to fight with the city. Our passion is animals. Now, Proverbs 12:10 says that a righteous man takes care of his animals. There hasn't been too much righteousness going on around here lately. And another thing that bothers me is that, on television, it was said that the people that worked down at that shelter were hurting because they're putting those animals down, and a counselor was brought in there to help them. Why would you do your employees that way? Especially when there is ability for us to come in, all we got to do is have some knowledge and get those dogs and get them pulled out of there. And the answer is all around us, but yet, we're not looking at anyplace else. You have, and I'm gonna close with this. Dogs have the ability to feel grief, joy, happiness, and you have the power of life and death. And in this situation, you've chose death and not life. And that saddens me to no end. Saddens me to no end. Thank you.
Christopher Moran?
Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. City Council Members, it's an honor to speak before you. My name is Chris Moran with San Angelo ISD, 1621 University Avenue. And this morning, my comments are specific to the San Angelo ISD bond election for May 3rd. As you know, I can neither advocate or oppose the measure, and so today, I just hope to share factual information with you. As you know, our board has called a bond election to address old and failing facilities, safety and security, and deferred maintenance. And my goal is to provide the factual information to our community and really point them to the resources they need to learn the facts. The Board of Trustees heard from more than 60 community members in the fall who evaluated our facilities and then spoke to the board in December and recommended consideration for projects. Anyone residing in SAISD school boundary and who's eligible to vote should note the deadline to register is April 3rd. Voting starts early, April 22nd through the 29th, and Election Day is Saturday, May the 3rd. Factual information about our school bond can be found at www.saisd.org/bond2025. This is a community decision about the future of our public school system, and I appreciate your time this morning. Thank you.
Cinni Flores?
My name is Cinni Flores, and I'm Single Member District 5. I just want to express my disappointment at the change in the policy or reverting back to capture-kill. That is not fair to the partner working with the city. I believe in an email to you. And we have invited everybody here to come out and do their due diligence and learn. The city manager in an email to me said he was aware of the programs that Paws provided. Obviously, that is not the case, because if so, you would know the benefit of some of those problems. We cannot work on a three-day timeline. It is not fair. We have provided solutions numerous times, a revision to the breeders' ordinance. That has been ignored. But then you went in and changed the timeline on a dog that is chipped from seven business days to five days without telling anybody. You guys can change what you want, but you're not addressing the problem. Enforcement, 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 is all I've got to say. And that has not happened to the level that it needs to happen. That is the only way. You cannot kill your way out of this. You cannot adopt your way out of this. You cannot transport your way out of this. The root of the problem is spay-neuter, and that has not been enforced like it should have. You guys need to communicate with the partner. Paws has spent more than $200,000 in a year on making the life of those shelter animals better. And this is what happens? That's not fair. I encourage you all to do your due diligence and get out there and see what we offer and see what the programs are firsthand, not second or third hand. Thank you.
Donnell Miller?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Donnell. I live in District 6. I've been a San Angelo resident for 23 years. I believe my voice matters, and I have faith that my concerns will not fall on deaf ears. I am concerned about the sudden changes that took place last week at the animal shelter. I am concerned with the lack of transparency and honesty regarding those changes. I am concerned that the decision to change the policies was made unilaterally by the city manager instead of by our elected representatives by vote. I am concerned that the public was made to believe that a specific committee would be formed and their findings would be discussed before changes were to be made, but that was not the case. It concerns me that Paws was circumvented in making this decision as well. I'm upset that the policy changes allowed immediate killing of numerous dogs in anticipation of overcrowding, and now kennels sit empty. I'm upset and saddened that because of the haste, the shelter mistakenly killed a dog that was to be adopted. I'm upset that while Paws and the citizens of San Angelo worked hard to save the latest euthanasia list, the city killed numerous dogs in what seemed to be secret. It is also upsetting that no one on the council met with the task force that Paws brought in to evaluate and help with the shelter issues. In the 23 years that I have lived in San Angelo, I have seen improvement in the welfare of our pet population due to the no-kill policies. I've witnessed firsthand the programs and policies that were in place before last week truly work and make a difference. So I ask that in the future, the city be transparent and honest. I ask that the decisions that involve the lives of our pet population be made by vote by elected officials. I ask that the city renew open communication with Paws and meet with their task forces or consultants. I do not agree with the policy changes that have been made. I do understand some euthanasia is necessary. I understand that there are no easy answers and that your job is hard. But these policies, I feel, they undo all the good work that has been done and all the progress that has been made. I ask the city to halt them immediately and open the issue back up for a discussion, a real discussion. I ask that the city enforce its spay-and-neuter ordinances. I know there are no easy answers, but the lives of the animals in this city matter, and they should matter to you. The good Lord entrusted their welfare to us from the beginning, the righteous care for their animals. Proverbs Chapter 12, verse 10. "Ask the animals, and they will teach you." Job, Chapter 12, verse 7 through 10. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Kate Brown?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've spoke before. I've been to the animal advisory committees, and this is a tragic, sad day. I want to remind you that every time the stray issue came up to the city to enforce the ordinances that are in place, your ordinances, your ordinances that you were voted in to take and enforce, you quickly diverted the conversation down a rabbit hole blaming best friends. Guess what? Best friends isn't in this city. They are not on your payroll, and they are not to blame for this problem. You are. It falls fully on your shoulders. You do not send out public education announcements about the ordinances. You do not enforce them. That is all on your shoulders, every one of your shoulders. I'm yet to show or tell us the truth of what happened this past week, whose final decision was. Was the task force, this supposedly expert task force thrown under the bus and decisions made around them? We don't know that, but guess what, folks? It will come out. We will understand that. And again, spay-neuter, the enforcement of those ordinances are the thing to go. So let me remind you a bit of a timeframe here. So in 2022, the issue came up about the roach issue at the shelter, the decay of that building. And it was bought, it was made public. It went national news. But it took a whistleblower to bring that out. The city didn't own up to it. The city didn't know what was happening. In 2002, the funding was approved to make repairs to that shelter. 2022. Today, we're 2025. In 2022 or early '23, the loan was paid back, no repairs made, but I'll bet there was a loss of financial dollars for interest of that loan. Again, no repairs made. In 2023, the city council meeting had a stray issue on the agenda, and the status and questions were brought up about the spay ordinances. And one answer was that it was hard to enforce them because pets are considered property in Texas. But there's no move to change those or get them written better. In 2024, the mayor says she will not approve any additional funding for animal services, no additional funding for extra animal control officers, no additional funding for front office help to help follow up on ordinances that weren't being followed. She said she'd already approved the building, shelter funds, and repairs, but again, there hasn't been one repair done. Later in '24, when the mayor did ask what was happening to the shelter repairs, that she wanted immediate answers, Morgan's answer said the repairs were on hold, asking for additional funding to retrofit the building to move the dogs to. So again, no repairs. You guys can turn this bus around and follow for the animals with education and enforcement of the ordinances that you were elected for. Thank you.
Yes?
As the next people come to the microphone, can we get them to talk into the microphone and remind them to state their name and address or single-member district? This young lady did not do that, so I didn't know where she was from.
Well, I don't mind telling you, I'm from Single Member District 1. And I'm sorry in my haste to get my message across to you guys that I didn't do that.
Okay. Heather Alcantar?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Heather Alcantar, and I am living in Precinct Number 2. I am here to express my concern and disappointment regarding the current state of the San Angelo City Animal Shelter and Animal Services. As a compassionate, which you can all see, community, I know that we can do better, much better. We must do better in supporting the most vulnerable citizens of this city, which are the animals. The policy changes that were recently made are not in alignment with the work and the progress that Concho Valley Paws, employees, volunteers, as well as other nonprofit organizations have worked so hard to achieve. As a matter of fact, these policies are a slap in the face to all of those people. I urge City Council to reevaluate, reallocate funds to help the animal shelter and related agencies create more programs to help the citizens that are low-income and the animals that suffer because of the lack of resources that they cannot seem to find. I understand that the city manager and Animal Services Department are trying to address the issue, but I strongly believe that this was the incorrect move, and I believe that more can be done in a more appropriate manner. Specifically, I would like to request that City Council consider allocating more funding to the programs that support low-income families in accessing veterinary care, which can prevent illness, suffering, and more animals in the shelters. This could be achieved through partnerships with local veterinarians, city-funded initiatives, and community outreach programs. By working together, I believe we can create a more compassionate and supportive community for all. I urge the mayor and the city manager to learn from Midland's Fix-It West Texas, because they've been extremely successful. And if Midland can do better, so can you, so can we. The secret meetings with the task force that we know nothing about is unacceptable and inappropriate, and especially for the city animal shelter director not to be allowed to attend these meetings makes absolutely no sense. Do better. Do more. Do right. Thank you.
Jenny Wilson?
Good morning. I'm Jenny Wilson. I'm with Concho Valley Paws. I'm very-
Your address or single-member district?
I don't live in the city limits, but I represent a contracted vendor. We have enjoyed our working relationship with the city, and by far, it's been a very professional and beneficial relationship. What has changed, well, what we focused that relationship on was the fact that we had a common goal, and that was to save lives. No one at the shelter wants to euthanize healthy animals, and of course, we don't want to see that happen. As long as we could work on that goal together, we were able to achieve great things. It seems like the direction of the city has changed, and that was done by one unilateral decision that we did not, were not given a seat at the table for discussion on. And I told Mr. Valenzuela and Mr. Dane in a couple of meetings on animal issues, I will unapologetically demand a seat at the table when you talk about animal welfare, especially when the organization I represent is investing almost a million dollars of resources in this partnership. Our entire mission is to save shelter pets. The city contract allows us for $70,000, which covers the cost and doesn't truly, but goes, covers in part the cost of adoption coordinators, because our contract is to facilitate the adoption of shelter pets. However, we do much more. We have provided for the medical care of all the shelter animals. When the animals were poisoned, we were there. When there was a disemper outbreak, we were there, providing those treatments, providing that support at our cost, not yours. We deserved a seat at the table to have this discussion, and we were denied that. It was unprofessional, and it was unethical. There are so many options to consider instead of euthanasia. We reached out to every single one of you and the city manager's office and invited you to choose a time that was convenient for you during a week-long visit that we had from our national partner, Best Friends, to discuss options, to discuss models, to address misinformation. Not a single one of you made the time to attend, not one. Only one of you had the courtesy to deny our invitation. When I come out publicly, I know it does not make me popular among this group, and that's okay. I'm not here to be your friend. I'm here to see that my mission with Concho Valley Paws, that is our driving force, that is what we do. We are here to advocate for these animals because no one else is going to. You have made a unilateral decision to appease a couple of people who are telling you that you have a huge stray problem. Why don't we really take advantage of that task force that you were set to appoint, Mr. Valenzuela, and let them look and see after a comprehensive view of what the issues really are? Thank you.
First of all, thank you for all the comments. I do appreciate that. I do want to make, actually read my statement and then make a few comments as well. As city manager, my priority is ensuring the health and safety of the residents of this community while also maintaining humane and responsible animal control policies. Now, due to the increasing number of stray and abandoned dogs in our city, and Ms. Wilson, I'm sorry to disagree with you, you can drive around and see the stray animals. We are taking necessary steps to address this issue, including opening full intake at the city-operated animal shelter. Unfortunately, this does mean that at times euthanasia will be a measure of last resort to manage shelter overpopulation and ensure public safety. City ordinance requires that stray dogs be held in the animal shelter for three days before they can be euthanized or adopted out. This holding period allows time for owners to reclaim their lost pets. However, this timeframe may vary if the animal is seriously ill, injured, or deemed dangerous. I can assure you that the city has no intention of euthanizing immediately after the prescribed time, and if that is the issue, that's going to be closely reviewed and ensured that that is not happening that way. Every effort will be made for replacement in a home, especially for adoptable animals. When dogs roam freely in our neighborhoods, they pose a significant threat to residents. Packs of stray dogs can become aggressive, leading to attacks or spreading diseases such as rabies. Additionally, traffic accidents involving stray animals are an increasing concern. By ensuring that all strays are brought into the shelter, we can prevent these risks and work toward responsible animal control. The city shelter has been operating at near capacity for an extended period, leading to difficult decisions regarding animal care. While the city is committed to working with animal rescue groups, fostering programs, and adoption initiatives, these resources are also stretched thin. Simply closing intake or limiting it to is not a viable solution when the number of stray dogs continues to grow. If the shelter becomes overcrowded, it negatively impacts the health and well-being of all animals in our care, leading to greater suffering. The key to addressing the issue lies in responsible pet ownership, and I think that we stress that a lot, and the mayor's talked about that a lot in the past. City ordinances require residents to spay or neuter their pets as well as ensure they are microchipped and vaccinated. Additionally, pet owners must securely contain their animals to prevent them from roaming freely. The challenges we face with shelter overcrowding stem largely from irresponsible pet ownership, abandonment, and failure to properly contain pets. While city staff works diligently to enforce these regulations, enforcement alone is not a comprehensive solution. Depending on staffing, staff performs between 6,000 and 10,000 enforcement hours per year. Some citizens have suggested hiring additional animal services officers to strengthen ordinance enforcement. While an increase in ASOs will be discussed in the upcoming budget workshop, the responsibility to comply with current animal control ordinances lies squarely on local pet owners. I remain hopeful that through community involvement, responsible pet ownership, strongly enforced ordinances, education, volunteerism, adoptions, fostering, and partnerships with animal rescue groups, we can significantly reduce the number of animals euthanized. Our shelter staff is dedicated to rehoming as many dogs as possible, but most, but we must also acknowledge the reality of limited resources and the need to balance public safety and human animal control, humane animal control. This is not a decision taken lightly. I encourage all citizens to be a part of the solution by adopting, fostering, donating, and advocating for responsible pet ownership. The thing that I call for is that the intake not be closed. If individuals showed up to the animal shelter and had a pet, a stray pet that they picked up, that yes, we still follow through with the whole, we would prefer that you foster the animal, but if in fact that individual that came with that stray dog that they found, they want to still turn it into the shelter, we can't turn that dog away. We won't turn that dog away. We won't tell them, go take him back where you found him. Maybe it's lost from its home. We're not going to be doing that. Anything that, you have somebody else, as far as, when those situations do happen, at times our ASOs are called out to deal with the same animal. Again, on our end, I'm making sure that we're doing everything we can to reduce the number of strays out in the public, out in the neighborhoods. Certain neighborhoods are more susceptible to other neighborhoods. But I just want to make sure that we are not just closing intake because we are full up at the animal shelter. I don't want to do that any longer. Again, if people are, I mean, if a dog is brought to the animal shelter, we will take it in. If we have an owner, a pet owner that wants to come to the animal shelter and turn in their pet, yes, we will go through the whole counseling process. We will do everything we possibly can to really assist that homeowner, or the pet owner. But again, if that pet owner wants to still leave the animal, we are not going to stop them from doing that. We will accept them at the animal shelter.
If you speak, we'll ask you to leave the room.
No.
Okay, so again, we respected your, we respected your comments.
And so on my end. Hold it down a little longer. Again. It is now, I think.
Testing, okay. Again, the only policy that was changed is that the fact that we will not be closing intake, and we will be accepting animals that come in. I want to make sure, again, that our streets are safe for our citizens. I want to make sure that the calls that we get in at the city hall, that there are pets running loose, that we're taking care of that situation. So we will be getting a report back to you as far as information. I know a lot of you asked about the task force. The task force is working on issues. They will be coming back with recommendations to City Council here, probably within the next three weeks. So that'll be coming forth. Mayor, that's a comment.
What about the conditions of the animal-
This is not, this is not a back and forth.
With this not open forum.
This is just a comment. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further public comments, Heather? All right. With that, we will end the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move into the consent agenda. I will ask each council member if there's an item they would like to have pulled from the agenda, starting with Larry.
No, ma'am.
Karen.
No, ma'am.
Lucy.
No, ma'am.
Harry.
No, ma'am.
Tommy.
No, ma'am.
Then may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Harry?
Second.
Seconded by Tommy. Public comment on any, on public, on the consent agenda?
None.
With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Consent agenda is approved. We will move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. To participate, please sign in with a city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A, consider approving a, quote, "not to exceed" ROM proposal for the Bill, Ailer, Senior Memorial River Stage modifications from basic IDIQ in the amount of $1,320,000 for new and remodel construction services and related site work, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. This contract is a cooperative purchase through buy board number 728-24RS means JOC. And Al, you are on.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, Mr. Valenzuela. Al Torres, construction manager, City of San Angelo. I don't have a presentation, because I think by now everybody's familiar with what we're doing at the river stage. Basically, just wanted to come up here, see if you had any specific questions. This is to award the, a contract, we can get a contract going with the contractor and get this project started.
With the approval of this contract, what's the timeframe, but from approval of the contract to actual work beginning?
We'll work with the contractor through the contract process, but I'm guessing six months.
Before we start?
No, 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 no.
No, I'm like, what?
Total construction time.
I'm asking, from the moment this is approved, today we approve this, when do we see action taken place?
It depends on how quickly we can get through purchasing, but I would guess less than a month.
So you're telling me by the time we get to April 1st, there will be work done?
That's what I'm hoping.
Okay.
Yeah, he cannot totally-
Yes, Lucy.
Right, I can't guarantee that, because it depends on contracts and-
But we've been waiting.
Yes.
Let's get it going.
Yes.
Lucy.
Al, let me ask you, whenever we're going through the construction, during that time, will everything cease, any events that are scheduled for that?
No, ma'am. We, and I've been visiting with the contractor, and we're going to sit down with Sid. He's already given me a list of a couple of events that, of course, Pop's Concert and some others that we have to work around, and we're going to make sure that things that do affect seating areas, you know, if we had to shut the bathrooms down for any reason, that those happen when there's not events going on.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for, yes, Larry?
We spoke earlier. I had about a million questions, and Mr. Torres assuaged my thoughts on most of them. My concern, let me say the good things. The inside of the restrooms is, they've done a good job of renovating those so that people with disabilities have an opportunity to use the facilities. And I spoke to you also about the slope on one of the ramps, and as you told me, it's a 1 to 16, which is the preferred ratio for ADA. But my concern is the entrance ways to the facility. I would like to see those done with all due haste, because as I understand it, that facility predates the ADA Act, and I'm almost positive that the platform there to get into the ladies' and men's room is too small, and it's difficult for someone with a wheelchair to get in there, or a walker, or a lady that is pushing a baby stroller. It's just extremely difficult, and for the life of me, I don't know why they put those concrete block sides on it that, you know, really severely limits the ability of people to use that facility. We'll be talking.
Yes, sir.
I would like all due haste on Phase Two, because I'm not sure that you're planning on including that restroom entrance way.
Well, the Phase Two design includes not only a large restroom down at the stage level, which is going to have, I don't remember, 50 or 60 new bathrooms down there, but we're also going to build another bathroom facility adjacent to the existing one. It'll be strictly women's, and then the one that's there will be all strictly men's. So that way, you have more bathrooms up at the ticketing level and concession level, and then the big one down at the stage level. And of course, those will be new, so there won't be any issues, ADA issues on those. We'll make sure of that. But we are working to take care of any existing ADA issues with this project.
And you'll be seeing that Phase B design coming back to you in the next couple of meetings.
Any other questions? May I have a motion for approval? Lucy made a motion to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Harry. Public comment?
Good morning. My name is Nelda Nalan, and I reside in Tommy Hebert's district. I want to thank the city council from the depths of my heart. I have seen changes over the last two and a half years with ADA in San Angelo that I didn't think was ever going to happen. So I want to thank Mr. Valenzuela, Mayor, and the city council members. I really, really appreciate it. I'm so anxious for this to come to pass with the river stage, but I would like to know today, because the most impact for my daughter being able to attend events there will come in Stage Two. So when do you see Stage Two coming, and how much money is involved in that? So I could have, even though this is going to be an improvement, it will not take care of all of our problems when we attend. Thank you.
Mayor, I can answer that a little bit, but you'll see the design aspect of that coming in the next meeting or two, and we're hoping that the funding is in place for that design work, and that's our first step. So once we get the full design complete, then that will come back to council to review for the actual funding, then for implementation of the project. So hopefully, right now, you'll see it in two weeks for them to award the design to be done, and the funding, we hope, will already be there for the design work. And then, once that's done, we'll have more of an idea of what the actual cost will be for construction, and then we'll come back to them at that time.
If you need, if you're going to speak, please come to the microphone.
I got that timeline. My question is, how long are your projections to start Phase Two?
For construction, I can't answer that right now, because the design work's not done, but the design work will, as we bring it back in the next two meetings, they will most likely award us to proceed with the actual construction drawings to be drawn up for Phase Two.
Okay.
And then, after we get those construction drawings complete, then we'll have a better idea of what sort of cost we're looking at for implementation of that. We'll bring it back to council to say, yes, we like these drawings, and we'll bring at that point a idea of how they might go about funding that. So-
Thank you for addressing that. I appreciate it.
Call with any questions.
Thank you.
I have one other statement, if you don't mind.
Yes, Larry, you may speak.
Did I do that again? I'm sorry, ma'am. Shanna Hospital, every facility they have has a push-button entrance way. The people and the clientele they have are our citizens who also use city functions, and we seriously need to think about having those kinds of-
Does that pertain to the river stage? If not, we can't talk about it.
I'll shut up.
This is a river stage conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. All right, so we've had a motion and a second, and no more public comment. We'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving item A?
Aye.
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 Motion passes six, zero. We will move on to item B, consider- We'll move on to Item B, consider accepting an annexation petition for the following. One, 9.712 acres of land from abstract A-8211, survey A Wilkie S-002 located west of Pendleton Parkway and south of Wilkie Drive, creating an extension of Trippington Way, that sounds exciting, Trippington Way, and setting a public hearing for April 15th, 2025. And two, 7.12 acres of land from abstract A-8211, survey A Wilkie S-002 located west of Pendleton Parkway, creating an extension of a minor collector, Pinon Ridge Drive, and setting a public hearing for April 15th, 2025. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, Mr. Valenzuela. We do have an annexation over here in the Prestonwood addition. This is going to be, once it's annexed in, this is the petition to hear an annexation, but it's these areas right in here, you can just barely see the pins on the map, but as you can see, this is the boulevard off of Highway 67 heading towards Mertson, our Sam's retail store, and this is Southland Boulevard over there. And so, again, these areas are here at the top of the Prestonwood addition and at the bottom where Trippington Way, which I think's a great name for a street, and then Pinon Ridge comes across here as well.
FYI.
Yes. So this, these are two areas within the same survey, but we are just taking them as two separate annexations just because they're not connected to each other. This area does have a preliminary plat, you can see that the preliminary plat was adopted back in 2021 by Planning Commission, and you can see the area is projected to be residential. They do have some detention there and some detention there that will be part of the annexation to deal with stormwater runoff. So here's the northern portion, just a more zoomed in area, you can see Trippington Way that's coming in through there that will continue to go across. This is the area behind the boulevard that is a drainage area and their detention basin will be there. They will be moving forward probably with a final plat in the next month or two to Planning Commission to plat out the actual lots. This is the southern area, again, Pinon Ridge coming across here where they'll have some housing on the, the south and the north, and their detention area here at one of the edges of the Red Arroyo that comes across that area that will then slowly drain into the Red Arroyo and then eventually into the South Concho River. With that, the staff does request to adopt the, the petition for annexation and to hold a hearing for these two properties. It's 9.712 acres of land and 7.12 acres of land, and we ask to hold the first public hearing on April the 15th, 2025.
How many is gonna show up on April the 15th?
How many what, ma'am?
How many people are gonna show up on April the 15th, tax day?
Well, that's a great question. As, as we're moving forward with this residential annexation, we're not sure that there would be very much non-support. I think folks will support this very strongly. Again, that gives us time to go through and work on the service plan and work through all the necessary notices.
Okay. Thanks. Questions for Aaron?
I know the part...
Larry, would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll get this down.
I know we don't have the parks dedication ordinance done yet, and every time I see these things, I'd see the houses stacked up and, and we go through this again for information purposes. It's over two miles from the bluffs to the nearest park, you know, and I just imagine some child pedaling a bike across a Sherwood way to get to a park. And here we are again with the housing development and we're not looking about green space.
This is an annexation only.
Right, this is an annexation and the preliminary plat has already been accepted. As you notice, there are some detention areas, there's discussion going on about those areas and, and what the possibilities could be, but I think that's for future discussion for that area and, and see how this develops.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Then I would like a motion. Who would like to offer a motion for approval?
Move to approve as presented.
A motion and a second by Tommy. Public comment?
Rocky Templin?
Morning, council. Rocky Templin, senior member District Five. I just ask that y'all accept it as presented.
Thank you. Is that all the public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
May we take a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. All right, we'll move into Item C, discussion and direction for possible action on the following. Amendments to Section 311, the cultural district overlay zone of the zoning ordinance. Two, amendments to Article 12.04, signs of the planning and development ordinance. And three, consider a resolution calling a joint public hearing of city council and the planning commission regarding amendments to Section 311, cultural district overlay zone of the zoning ordinance, Section 313, use table of the zoning ordinance, Section 304, commercial district intent statements, Article 12.04, signs of the planning and development ordinance, and Section 420, off-site signs of the zoning ordinance and establishing alternative notice procedures. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, again, city council and Mr. Valenzuela. Mayor, I, I hope to have shorter captions for you in the future.
That was a long one.
Yes, ma'am. So today, we're just talking about the plans for our cultural district expansion and adopting the sign ordinance amendments and setting a alternative method of public notice. So I've got some PowerPoints or a slideshow here that kind of just describe both of those areas, and then I will make the request that we set a joint meeting date as well as an alternative notification for our citizens for when they can come for public hearings on those items. So this here is our, is our proposed cultural district expansion. Currently, our cultural district just kind of encompasses the Fine Arts Museum right in that area, just this small little area here. We have, over the years and through our comprehensive plans and our cooperation with the Fine Arts Museum, Fort Concho, the Chamber, the Railroad Museum, said we need to have an actual cultural district that protects our cultural items for our community and again, of course, helps support our historic downtown and all of those things. And so let me just kind of go through the boundaries of which the committee has come together and said, this is what we believe the boundary should be. So here on the west side, this is Abe Street right here at the Concho River. It comes down to Highland, it goes from Highland all the way across to Russ Street. And what I will mention is that the properties on the inside of this red boundaries are the ones that would be within the district, the ones that are across the street are not within the district. This is Russ Street and it would turn north, and then as it goes under the railroad crossing there, it turns into Allen Street. It comes here and then goes right behind, or down the property line between the hotel there and some property that will be developed in the future, goes back to the Concho River and then just follows the Concho River around. So what this cultural district overlay expansion will do is allow the zoning to be opened up for more flexibility, and it will also protect the, the history, the integrity, and celebrate our cultural differences in those areas to bring areas together like the River Stage, like the Railroad Museum, Fort Concho, all of these wonderful amenities that our community has that we can celebrate our, our history. So in this area, you can see what the current zoning is, there's some light manufacturing, some heavy commercial, some general commercial, heavy commercial, and so forth. What we're trying to do is create a CD overlay zone, very similar to the central business district, which is in the downtown area, but this would just be a, a cultural district overlay that would allow general commercial, neighborhood commercial, office warehouse, and all the residential districts that are, that could be offered in that area. Primarily, the district is, is the areas in District Three, Mr. Harry Thomas, right here on Cohenheim, and that's not the best straight line, actually is the end of District Five, Mrs. Karen Hesse Smith. And so, to the east is the Fort Concho area, to the west is the Santa Rita area. So here you see the mix of zoning. You can see the fort has a very large planned development. What this zoning would do would allow that planned development to go away and would still allow all the activities that the museum currently does and would not create another layer that they'd have to go to, to amend something. It makes it a little simpler for them. You can see some of the areas that are CGCH, these would transition to general commercial. We have been working with those property owners and we do have a town hall meeting that we're meeting with some of those folks today and letting them understand the majority of those uses are currently general commercial. Even if they're heavy commercial, they will continue to be allowed to be heavy commercial until they become vacant for a two-year period. So if the property goes vacant, then it would revert back to general commercial at that time. Same with the light manufacturing and things like that. What we have learned is in the light manufacturing areas, most of those are acting as warehousing, not actual light manufacturing, and so changing it to office warehousing actually gives them some more benefit to, to do some things there. You can see here closer to the Abe and Cohenheim area, there's just kind of a, a patchwork of different things from office commercial, neighborhood commercial, and then a large area of RS2. That would continue to allow them to have those uses and allow an expansion of the residential uses as well if someone wanted to do short-term rentals, if they wanted to add an accessory dwelling, if they wanted to be like an RS2, that they have two dwellings on a larger lot. Here's the vision plan. You can see here, this, this area is designed to be just like central business or downtown area, so we've made that a conscious effort. You can see where we have the red is commercial, you can see the commercial areas. The blue, of course, is actually institutional, which again is Fort Concho. The green is open space, and of course, anything that's yellow is actually neighborhood. And then this over here is lighter commercial. And so, by moving this to the central business district overlay, it allows all of those uses and is congruent with our comprehensive plan that is active today. Here we just have some of the, the photos of some of the, the great amenities that our community has that we want to protect, that we want to enhance, that we want to know that our community celebrates these, not just locally, but with tourism that comes in. And if we can create a cultural district that our tourists not only visit the historic downtown, but also we know they visit our cultural district, and how can we continue to help support those areas to thrive? How can we help support some small business owners in those areas to, to start businesses that support that cultural district? Again, our welcome center, number one welcome center in the state of Texas, the Paseo, our railroad museum. I really like our, our pool, now that's just a picture of our pool, but when you see the actual front side, the facade of the pool and things, we have one of the best municipal pools in West Texas. I mean, it is, our, our team that takes care of it does a great job, they've preserved the historic portion of the pool and, of the structures, and it's just, to me, it's a, a great piece of architecture for our community. So again, our rationale for the expansion is preserve, protect, and celebrate and brings our San Angelo community together. The area, again, will be very similar to the central business district zoning, it will off, allow the office warehouse and allow, allow all residential zonings with smaller lots. And the goal is for the area to help support the placemaking icons in San Angelo and the historic downtown with history, arts, cultural events, music, and housing for San Angelons and their visitors. The next steps, tonight we do have a town hall meeting at the San Angelo Fine Arts Museum. Anyone from the public is welcome to attend. We have sent notices to all of those properties in that area that they're welcome to attend and to ask questions of staff. It will be at number one Love Street at 6:00 PM tonight. We have drafted the ordinance and it is posted online, so citizens can see that, and we have made sure that citizens can comment via email, phone, and at the town hall meeting. And through this process, we propose a joint meeting with Planning Commission and City Council to hear the ordinance on April the 1st. With that, Mayor, I do have the sign one to go through, or do you want to ask questions on this, this and then move to the sign?
Why don't we ask for questions on this first?
Yes, ma'am.
And simplify it so we don't get too far ahead?
Yes, ma'am.
So does council have any com, Harry?
I just want to make a comment. I appreciate the work that this particular task force did to get to this stage. I think the cultural district is very, very important to this particular community and what we've done is protect those particular businesses and, and homes in that particular area while allowing some things to happen for future expansions. And I'll say, this district is very, very important for this section of the city, so thank you.
Larry, would you like, I see that face, looks like he wants to say something. Yes.
You said you had mailouts, apparently. Have you, what kind of responses have you received already?
Well, we did receive a few responses, very positive. We did receive one response saying they weren't able to see the rap, the map, and so we created some different maps and made sure that we sent those out as well so they could see street names, as opposed to something like this that, you know, us staff not thinking, oh, we know what the overhead image looks like, but we need street names. So, so far, we have not had any negative comments, but we welcome any comments that will come in and we'll be sure to visit with people and try to address their comments so that we bring something forward unilateral to the Planning Commission and City Council.
Other questions, comments on this portion? Do we need to take a vote on this portion first, or just can do it as a whole?
No, the only action is gonna be on the resolution to call for a public hearing.
Otherwise, it's information only?
That's right.
Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. So the next section is about the signs. As you guys know, we've had some moratorium on a designation of off-site signs, and what we have in our community have changed to really is what is referred to around the state as a billboard sign. We are asking to change that temporary designation and making a permanent fix to calling them billboard signs, not off-site signs. The charge back in December from City Council was, let's please, please bring this back in six months, let's look at what we need to do to make this correct according to the Supreme Court rulings and really not dive into too many other things in the sign ordinance because a lot of things just don't need to be changed at this time, and our, our timeframe is very narrow. So we have gone through and here on the left side, the committee has been working very hard to understand what are the impacts of billboards in particular. Here on the left side, you can see these purple areas, that's the actual corridors in our ordinance that allow billboards. And you can see, most of them are on our highway or entrances, exits of our community. Now you can see a couple of these little yellow dots up here and you say, well, that's not in the corridor. Well, we also have certain zoning districts that allow billboards by right, and those two actually were in light manufacturing districts that allow billboards by right. So they're also looking at that. So within that definition, that we're doing a billboard, that it looks at the distance from residential areas, distance from intersections, and distance from each other, making sure that we don't have a high concentration. And as we know, that some billboards are starting to turn to electronic messaging, and so if they're closer to residential areas, how is that dimmed after the nighttime hours or how is it facing so it's not interacting with the residential areas? So we have created also an electronic message definition, and our goal is to protect our residential districts and our neighborhoods and the overall aesthetic of our community as people are coming in and enjoying San Angelo. Currently, our height for signs are designated by zoning district, and if you just think back to that image about Cohenheim and Abe and you saw that patchwork of zoning districts, seemed like almost every other property has a different height, and so it's better done by street classification, is it an arterial, is it a collector, is it a local street? And so that it's easier for our sign companies and businesses to understand, this is the maximum height they could have for a sign. And the last thing we're looking at is just trying to be congruent with our intentions from our design districts of how our banners looked in our historic district, our river corridor, our cultural district, and our downtown area. So I just have some images of signs, there's no commentary necessarily with these signs. As you go through them, obviously, I was hungry that day because almost every sign has to do with food. I don't know why that was. This one is just always interesting to me. As, as all of you know, that we have a boarded building here that might even be on the dangerous building, and yet they have a, a, not a billboard sign, it's not big enough to be a billboard sign, but a sign that's advertising off-site items, and so we would, we would just call that a freestanding sign now, but there, the property's getting benefits from having a sign on their property. That's the only reason why we kind of point, point that out. These are good, again, of course, are signs here, a nice little shop in the south side of town. They have wall signs, they have these kind of freestanding signs that are air-activated. We are seeing more and more of those around our town, and there's a section in our ordinance that already deals with those, and so just something to bring people's attention to. Again, here's a corridor, Avenue L. Again, here's a corridor, Avenue L. You can see, right here, blue agave is across the street, but they actually have a nice wall sign there, based on the size of the wall, but you can still see it on Avenue L. It serves its purpose. You can see all the signage along there that, you know, we're starting to get a lot of things, and that's coming up to a pretty significant intersection. And so those are the reasons why we look at signage. Is that a distraction for our drivers? Is it serving the purpose of trying to draw people to the business? We do have billboards. We've got billboards. This is a legal billboard in our community. You can see it's got kind of four signs, two facing down one way, two kind of facing the other way.
You know, this presentation is making signs look very unattractive. Are you aware of that?
That was not the intent. It was just more informational.
Well, it's coming across that way.
I apologize.
It's a wide eye.
Okay, well, I'll do better at the, if we do April 1st, I'll do better with that. And then we have, you know, we always have real estate signs that are out there. In fact, I saw one in downtown this morning at one of the businesses they're trying to sell, but it had five signs within about 50 feet. And so while I appreciate they're trying to move the property, at some point, we also, as a community, say, okay, how many do we really need within 50 feet of each other? So that's just things to think about. So our rationale, again, was that moratorium since 2020, through the court cases, that had some temporary changes, and we're wanting to adopt them as permanent and make minor changes to sections. Locations of billboards is important to our community for the major safety decisions, as well as aesthetic for the quality of life, being the visual arts capital of Texas. Heights will be, we will propose that heights will be classified by roadway, as opposed to zoning district. And we'll ensure that the size, location, and lighting of signs meets the necessary standards to protect the health, welfare, and safety of public and preserves the values of adjacent properties. And we want to be reasonable with our sign regulations. We know signs are important to our commercial customers. They are important to getting out information, and so we want to be reasonable. And so we want to make sure that they continue to have the ability to communicate to customers and know that those commercial businesses are bolstering our community, so. With that, we do have a town hall meeting scheduled for March 13th at the Tom Green County Library downtown. It will be at 6:00 p.m. We have mailed notices to over 60 sign companies that have pulled sign permits, so that we will get direct feedback from them. We will also be sending this to our friends at the Chamber of Commerce, to our friends at the HBA, that they also have sign companies and businesses and things that are interested. We'll also send it to our downtown San Angelo organization, so that they are invited as well, so that we can hear from a multitude of folks to find out if we are being reasonable. The draft ordinance will be posted on, or is posted online. And again, citizens can comment via email, phone, and at the town hall meeting. And again, we will propose the April 1st as the joint meeting, trying to knock out these two items with one meeting. With that, staff is requesting to adopt a resolution for a joint meeting of the planning commission and the city council to be held on April the 1st at 8:30 a.m. here at the McNeese Convention Center to discuss and the first reading of the expansion of the cultural district overlay zone, which will amend Section 304, Section 311, and Section 313 of the zoning ordinance; and two, discussion and first reading of the sign amendments in Article 12.04 of the planning and development ordinance and Section 420 of the zoning ordinance. And we request to establish an alternative notice procedure, being a newspaper notice to the community 15 days before both items, to the public for these items to be discussed at the joint meeting.
I'm going to go back to the sign ordinance piece of it and ask if there's any questions or comments from anyone on the sign ordinance piece of it. So if you'll go back-
Yes, ma'am.
-to that portion of it. Karen?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So I think the big issue is, number one, does this satisfy all of the issues from Austin state regulations? And then if there's federal regulations, but, you know, in the past, we've had some of them, the state come out with some issues that we had to accommodate. So does this take care of those issues?
Yeah, so the final holding that came down was you actually could have a distinction between off-site and onsite signs. We actually, during the moratorium, we deleted that distinction and have found that we think that that works for us, and it's really billboards that we want to regulate. So yes, this satisfies that, because we're taking it out anyways, but even if we left it in, we would still be satisfying the latest holding that came down on that.
Okay. Yes, Larry?
This is a real softball question. Banners. And I saw some of them there, kind of like the one that downtown wants to put in. Those are great. I wondered about banners across an entire street. Does that fall into this?
Well, those are currently regulated in our sign ordinance. There's a process for them to go and request how to do that. And so you see those in, I think it's Beauregard primarily that those go across. There may be some other areas in town that they go across, but there is a process already for that. We are proposing no changes for that. And so we want to continue to allow those entities to celebrate items and notify the public of some type of item that way. We feel like that kind of still gives us that small-town feel. And so so far, our sign committee has not recommended any changes in that area.
One of the questions I get a lot and comments on are those floppy man things that, you know, are out there on streets or locations to draw attention to, whatever. Talk about that.
So currently, our ordinance has a prohibition of what's called air-activated signs. And I don't have a picture of those guys that fling their arms, but that's an air-activated sign. One may argue that these signs are air-activated, because they're designed as to have movement and catch people's eyes as they're driving by to, oh, what is that? And when you see a corridor like this, that you have Avenue L. and Chadburn Street, there's a lot of traffic there at different times of day, and our concern is, does that cause distractions for drivers? And so we believe our current ordinance addresses that, so we're not changing our current ordinance. But I think it comes also down to education, and educating not only our sign companies, but our commercial properties of what's appropriate and what's too many, those types of things. So I think that's just an education effort that, as we move forward with this and adopt potentially a new ordinance, is how do we educate those people and make sure that we're helping them understand what the rules are?
So we're saying, these are okay flopping in the wind, air movement, but the little man isn't? And what?
I would say that these currently in our ordinance are not allowed.
So the little man can't be allowed if these aren't allowed?
Right. There's also, and I know that you all heard, and it's probably been six months ago, about whether they're inflatable items or animated types of items. And those currently in our ordinance are prohibited. We're not proposing any changes. One item that was brought up by the sign committee was about neon signs, and currently we do not prohibit those. It's about brightness, not about what type of material is it made out of. We actually, I think neon signs can be very helpful, particularly maybe in our cultural district area, or maybe a Long Sherwood Way that used to have a lot of neon signs. And again, it's about-
I think they're far more attractive than those electronic billboards.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's just a personal opinion.
I agree. And so it's more about, city staff does not want to be put in the position of reading a sign for interpretation. We need to be put in the position of how many and location.
Yeah, you're not into what's on the sign. That's not your responsibility.
Correct. That's correct. So that's our goal with this, these ordinance changes, is to come into compliance, make sure we have something that works for our community, and still protects the safety and integrity of what the sign ordinance should do.
Questions?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion, too.
Motion and a second by Larry? Well, this is to adopt the resolution, so we don't have to have a motion, right?
No, you do need a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any public comment, Heather?
No, ma'am.
Then we'll take all those in favor of approving all of these items, this resolution. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. We will now move into our closed session. Executive session under provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement that Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. A, Section 551072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding: One, Approximately 200.11 Acres Out of Survey 20, WC Rye Corporate Company, Abstract 8138, Approximately 143.78 Acres Out of Survey 19, WCry.com.co, Abstract 4018, and Approximately 8.39 Acres Out of Survey 4 1/2, JW Johnson, Abstract 8647, and Two, Approximately 316 Acres Out of Sarah R. Robertson, Survey Number 178, Abstract 8478. We will now be leaving this room and going to our closed session. The order at 10:34 a.m. on Tuesday, March 4th. We have come back from our closed session. I am going to ask for a motion authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a non-binding letter of intent with Skybox Data Centers LLC regarding the possible sale of city property, being approximately 343.89 acres out of Surveys 19 and 20, WC Rye Company, Abstracts 4018 and 8138, and 8.39 acres out of Survey 4 1/2, JW Johnson, Abstract 86.47, with a proposed purchase of $50,000 per acre, subject to city council's approval of a final contract of sale and an agreement under Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code. May I have a motion for approval? Move to approve.
But we all want to.
I think everyone said yes. So I'm going to take it as a motion by council and a second by council. Make that in the notes. Public comment, please.
That's kind of wonderful.
Okay.
Lucy got it. That's the loudest voice. I'm sorry, Grace.
Any public comment?
Michael Looney, Vice President of Economic Development, with the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce, serving the coast of DC. Thank you.
With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. We will now move into our follow-up and administrative issues, which is what we just did. And now we're going to consider approving various board nominations. Designer and Historic Review Commission, Chris Carter, SMD 4 to second term ending in September 2026. The Development Corporation, Jimmy Barton, SMD 3 to first term ending February 2027. Carlos Rodriguez, SMD 4 to second term ending in February 2027. And Stephen Mahaffey, SMD 5 to a second term ending February 2027. And the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Charles Young, SMD 2 to the first term ending January 2027. May I have a motion for approval of the board nominees, please? Move to approve. We're pretty unanimous here. So I'm going to take it from Lucy and a second from Harry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have just affirmed all of the appointments. And now, are there announcements of consideration of future agenda items? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Move with adjourn.
Take it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six-zero. Thank you.